Good evening. I call the Board of Commissioners to order on January 16, 2020. Welcome everyone for coming. We will have the invocation tonight by Reverend Lester Latony. After Lester, Reverend Latony says the invocation, we'll have the presentation of the colors by the VFW. If everyone would stand please.
Thank you Mayor, and as we prepare to go to God in prayer, we ask that we please remember former Vice Mayor Dr. C.H. Charlton, who is not doing very well at this point in time in his life, so keep him and your family in your prayers, please. Eternal and all wise God, our heavenly Father, we come to you and we thank you God for another day and another opportunity that you have blessed in this great city. We thank you for the city of Johnson City. We thank you for our mayor and vice mayor, our commissioners, for our city manager and all of the staff of this great community that work so diligently to bless our citizenry and make sure that the services that are provided are the best that can be done in our region. We pray now God that in the midst of our blessings for our city, that you continue to bless our county, our state, our nation. We need you God, and without you we can do nothing. With you all things are possible if we're only willing to trust you and believe in you. Now God, we pray that you would be the one who's in charge of these deliberations. You ordained, you established government, that it might be a blessing to the citizenry that are being governed. So God, we pray that you would have your way and your will would be done in this hour and time. It's in the precious name of our Savior Christ that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Remain standing for presentation of the colors. Would you lead the pledge?
Would you lead it?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Mayor, our commission requests we are moving a presentation of proclamation recognizing Four Chaplains Day to this point in the agenda.
And Mayor and council members, I appreciate your allowing us to come this evening on behalf of Post 24 American Legion. I'd like to introduce Alan Jackson, who's going to give us a little history and background concerning the Four Chaplains Day.
The story I have for you tonight is the SS Dorchester, four U.S. Army chaplains and a Washington County lad by the name of William Thomas Cannon Jr. William was born in Washington College, Tennessee on the 20th of April, 1915. He graduated Washington College Academy, class of 1935, and attended the University of Tennessee Knoxville for one year before returning home to work on his father's farm and be a farmer and a poultry man. William enlisted the United States Army Air Forces on 5 May, 1942. He was dispatched to Jefferson Barracks in Lehman, Missouri for basic training. After completing basics, William trained as an aircraft mechanic at the Isaac Delgado Central Trade School in New Orleans, Louisiana, and also in Biloxi, Mississippi. He was assigned to Bluey West One Airfield in Narset, Greenland. William's ride to Greenland was going to be on the USS Dorchester, also known as a USAT, a United States Army transport. He, along with 901 other passengers and crew, including four newly minted United States Army chaplains, departed New York Harbor on the 23rd of January, 1943, en route to St. John's, Newfoundland. The Dorchester departed St. John's the next day on the 24th of July with two other USATS and three United States Coast Guard cutters as their escorts. This bare-boned six-ship convoy was designated as SG-19, and their course to Greenland would take them through the waters known as Torpedo Junction. A German spy at St. John's radio to U-boat Commander, which is a German submarine U-223, that this convoy had departed St. John's and its configuration, exactly where they were going and their route that they were taking. On the 2nd of February, 1943, after becoming agitated because the rest of his wolf pack of four other submarines did not come with him, he had the spread of three torpedoes loaded and told them to wait for his command to fire. That command came at 00:55, which is 12:55 a.m. on the 3rd of February, 1943. One of the torpedoes met its mark on the right side mid-ships of the Dorchester, right where the engine room is. That torpedo exploded, ripping a hole from the waterline all the way to the top deck, killing most all that were in the lower decks. After the attack, and he seen that thing had been hit, he actually ordered his submarine to submerge to 500 feet, and he stayed there to ensure that no one was chasing him until he resumed his course. But after this attack, the men on board, as you know, the confusion and the terror of what had happened, they forgot what they were trained to do. So the terror, the cold temperatures, the inadequate boat drills, and the command decision, the convoy commander, would lead to an even bigger disaster, and it would have been even worse if not for these four Army chaplains that were on board. You had Methodist Minister George Lansing Fox, himself a veteran of World War I that was wounded in action, and awarded the Silver Star and a French Croix de Guerre; a Dutch Reformed Church and American minister Clark von der Sall Polling; a Catholic priest, John Patrick Washington; and Rabbi Alexander David Good. These four were all friends because they attended the U.S. Army Chaplain School at Harvard University together. The chaplains brought calm to the chaos that ensued by taking over the handing out of extra life jackets, leading the passengers to boats and rafts, or helping them to climb down the ropes into the water to the boats that were already down. They also tried to find extra clothing, jackets, gloves, et cetera, for the men who were going into the water because they knew hypothermia would take over in about 20 minutes and their lives would be lost. One chaplain even given up his one pair of gloves to a soldier who was trying to get back to his room to get the ones he had left behind. Once all the life preservers were handed out, some more soldiers came up. The chaplains immediately took off their life preservers and gave them to them as they were going into the water. They called those in the water and gave them encouraging words and told them to move back from the boat itself, the Dorchester, because it was sinking. And she did sink. She sank at 01:20 or 1:20 a.m., just 25 minutes after that torpedo impacted. Nearly all of the 224 that survived the disaster credited their survival to the four immortal chaplains and their actions. They knew if not for their leadership, their organization, their encouragement, the calm presence that they gave to them, more would have died. Those in the water and on the ship watched the chaplains. After physically doing all that they possibly could, the chaplains joined arms, and they prayed and went down with William and the Dorchester. William Thomas Cannon Jr., his name is listed on the East Coast Memorial in Battery Park in Manhattan, New York. He also has a memorial marker here in Johnson City next to his parents' graves in section Garden of the Peace at Montevista Memorial Park.
Thank you so much. It's very humbling tonight to read this proclamation and to recognize the sacrifice that so many have given to us for our freedom. The proclamation is for the Four Chaplains. Whereas the Dorchester was an army transport that carried officers, enlistees, Navy armed guard, merchant seamen, and civilian workers in the North Atlantic, and whereas four Army chaplains banded together on February 3, 1943, a night of terror and panic for the 902 men aboard the Dorchester when it was torpedoed as it neared its destination. And whereas the chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant Clark v. Polling, and Lieutenant John P. Washington did not allow their differing Methodist, Jewish, Roman Catholic, and Dutch Reformed faiths to divide them, and whereas their acts of self-sacrifice instilled hope and courage in the countless men across religious barriers as the chaplains tended the wounded, calmed the frightened, and gave up their life jackets at the cost of their own lives so that others might live. And whereas many of the 230 men who survived the sinking of the Dorchester owed their lives to these four chaplains whose selfless spirit serves as an example to us today. Now therefore I, Jenny L. Brock, Mayor of the city of Johnson City, do hereby proclaim February 3, 2020, as Four Chaplains Day in Johnson City, Tennessee, and encourage all citizens to commemorate the heroism of these men.
Under proclamations, Mayor, the next item is presentation of Tennessee Highway Safety Officer Awards to five police officers. We have Sergeant Tim Hensley, Child Passenger Safety Instructor of the Year, Dennis Brown Beyond the Stop Award, Jessica Lines Beyond the Stop Award, Drew Guyer Regional DUI Award, David Smith Certificate of Recognition if they would come forward here to meet the mayor. And we have Chief Carl Turner as well to kind of lead into it.
So Chief, why don't you just give an introduction?
Well, the Tennessee Highway Safety Office, it's divided into regions in Tennessee. So the Upper East Tennessee region is where we've received these awards. And to my right is Officer Jessica Lines. To her right is Officer Dennis Brown, and to his right is Officer, Sergeant Tim Hensley. And they received awards after being nominated from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. And so I can explain a little bit about the awards that they've got. Officer Lines and Officer Brown, they received an award for going beyond the stop, and that means that during the traffic stop, they investigated beyond the infraction that they stopped the car for, and that investigation led to some arrests for people selling drugs, and they took a sizable amount of drugs off the street, as well as a number of firearms and proceeds from drug sales. So we always, we always train our officer to look beyond the stop, and most people who commit crimes get from point A to point B by vehicle. So they did very well on that traffic stop, and we wanted to recognize them. And Sergeant Hensley, he's been involved in child safety seats and installation of those seats and protecting our youngest citizens for a number of years. And so we're very proud of the work that he has done there. And so he was selected for an Instructor of the Year, and so he instructs other officers and people, firemen as well, in installing those safety seats. And again, they protect our youngest citizens. And two of the officers that aren't here, Officer Drew Guyer, he received an award for DUI enforcement. We always think if we can get people to not drink and drive and slow down, we can save lives. And so that's part of our goal every year. And also Officer David Smith, and he has a long-standing history of traffic enforcement at the Police Department, and he also teaches our traffic crash reconstruction. So he trains our officers as well, and so we wanted to recognize those officers. And I would also be remiss if I didn't recognize all the officers who have worked so hard. As you know, we're shorthanded, and those calls for service still come in. So the men and women there every day are answering those calls, and hopefully we'll be able to hire some more officers and do some more things that we would like to do at the Police Department.
Thank you Chief. I imagine there's some certificates to go with this. I don't think they made it up here tonight, but we will make sure they get into your hands. On behalf of the City Commission, and I know Mr. Peterson and Mr. Stahl and all the administration, want to thank you for the selfless work that you do. We know that every day when you come on shift, we know that it's dangerous out there, that you put your lives out for us, and we want to say thank you very much for that. You make us look good out there. One thing we never get are complaints against the Police Department, and that's always a really good thing. So thank you for the wonderful image that you paint of Johnson City and for keeping us safe. Commissioners, could I ask y'all to stand, and if y'all would turn around, I'm sure they would love to shake your hands if we could.
Mayor, that brings us to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, consideration of the minutes for the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting held on Thursday.
Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Move for approval.
This motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes. Mr. Stahl, I would like to make, I think we have to add something to the agenda, and I want to move something on the agenda. Pastor Heppenstein, Heppenstein.
Also known as Halpstein.
Halpstein has to go to church, and his item is on the third reading of the ordinances, which is way deep into the agenda. So I don't think anybody in this chamber would mind if we move you up. So we're going to move him, Mr. Stahl, to right before the consent agenda.
Right before the consent, yes ma'am.
All right, and you have an item to add.
I do. We have a request to consider beer license application for Cootie Browns ETSU at 2715 North Run Street, Johnson City. And I'd like to add that beer license application to the agenda as item 4B, right after the application for the Ishan Incorporated Hachimi Japanese Cuisine. So that'd be item B under number four.
Thank you. I have a motion to add the beer license from Cootie Browns to our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, our second. Any other questions, discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes.
Which brings us again to item four under licenses. We do have a consideration of beer license application for Ishan Incorporated doing business as Hachimi Japanese Cuisine, 3101 West Market Street, Suite 108, Johnson City. This item is for consideration of a Class I on-premise beer license for Ishan Incorporated, again, doing business as Hachimi Japanese Cuisine, 3101 West Market Street, Suite 108. The business is in a B4 zone. A report has been received from the Legal Department finding no disqualifying factors. The applicant has been informed of mandatory presence here at the commission meeting, and this application is for your consideration.
Is the applicant present? Would you come forward, please? And if you would state your name and address?
My name is Yi Ji Wang, and the restaurant is Hachimi Japanese Cuisine, and the address would be 3101 West Market Street, Suite 108, Johnson City, Tennessee.
Very good. Have you read the rules and regulations about serving alcohol in the city of Johnson City?
Yes, I have.
And do you agree to abide by those?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners?
Move for approval?
Second.
All right. Any questions of the applicant? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes. Now, you get a chance. You're on TV.
Oh, really?
Well, you want to talk about your restaurant?
Sometimes my mom watches.
So I'm assuming it's Asian food, correct?
We sell hibachi, sushi, ramen, noodle. Yes, yeah, and a little bit appetizer too.
Okay, you gave the address, but tell us exactly where that is.
Would be right by the Walmart and between Johnsboro and Johnson City.
Oh, okay.
And it's very close to ETSU, I think. I think it's close there. I'm from Knoxville, so I'm not from here.
Okay, so this is a, this is a new opening, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Very good. Well, good luck to you. We'll get out and eat with you sometime.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the next license application is considered beer license application for Cootie Browns ETSU, 2715 North Run Street, Johnson City. And this item is for consideration of a Class I on-premise beer license for Cootie Browns ETSU Incorporated, 2715 North Run Street, Johnson City. The business is in the B3 zone. We have received reports from the Legal Department defining no disqualifying factors. The applicant has been informed of mandatory presence here at this commission meeting, and this is in order for your consideration.
Good. Would the applicant come forward, please? And if you would state your name and address?
Logan Hines. This is Johnny Vella. We are at 1404 West Market, or no, sorry, not West Market, West State of Franklin.
Right.
Across the street from ETSU.
Very good. Have you read the rules and regulations about selling alcohol in the city of Johnson City?
We have.
And do you agree to abide by those?
Yes.
Very good. Commissioners?
Move for approval?
Her second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes. Now, we can't wait to hear what's inside that building. It is very impressive. So do you want to tell us about the new Cootie Browns?
It is, it is very impressive. We've had a lot of people express a lot of interest, and they've also been really curious as to, I guess, how different the building appears. Don't worry, when you get inside, you can definitely tell it's still Cootie Browns, tons of collectiveness. Same menu, awesome food. We've been working towards a really great staff, training them, getting them ready.
When is the opening? That's my big question. When are we going to open the door?
That's an excellent question.
We're slated for January 27. Cootie Browns have been rooted in the community for the past 20 years, and this is our third location that we're opening. Many success, much success in Bristol for the past four and a half years. So to open our third location and then be our second in Johnson City, this is, this is something that we're excited about. And being across an ETSU campus.
Home run.
Oh, it is.
How many will it seat?
Tot occupancy, 260.
Okay.
With everything. We're excited.
Well, thank y'all so much. Let us know when you're going to have the grand opening.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make a big ribbon cutting out there.
We expect to see all of you here.
Everybody.
Let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, that brings us to appointments. We have five boards and commissions to consider appointments for. The first is consider four appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This has been advertised, and we received five applications, again, for four appointments. You can see the attached memo for the list of applicants, and this appointment is for a normal three-year term, which will expire in 2022. Well, really now, the amended, amended action of your commission meeting will be in January 2023.
Okay, Commissioners, we are on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And for the, for our citizens, this is a very important board. It deals with variances in zoning issues. It is a statutory board, that its rulings can't be overruled by this commission. It would have to go to a court. So it's very important, and we look for people with backgrounds that, you know, are suited for a lot of legal overview and that kind of thing. So Commissioners, do we have some recommendations for these appointments?
I would nominate Will Crumley.
Okay. Got Mr. Crumley.
I would nominate Rodney Severson.
Rodney Severson, okay. Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes, I would nominate Dr. Stacy Wild, who is a reappointment and on the Planning Commission, and also Ms. Jacqueline Anderson, who's part of the JC 101 class. And we've really been encouraging people from those classes to get involved.
And is an attorney?
And is an attorney.
Okay. All right, so that is four recommendations. So any other?
Do we need a motion to make those four?
Let's, we have the nominations, so is there, somebody can summarize the full nomination?
Severson, Crumley, Wild, and Anderson. I'd make a motion that they be appointed to the BCA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes.
That brings us to the Historic Zoning Commission. We have two appointments to the Historic Zoning Commission. There are two vacancies, and appointments to the Historic Zoning Commission are for five-year terms. One position is for an architect who must be a resident of Johnson City. The second position is an at-large opening. There's also to be a resident of the city. The architect appointment is to fill a vacancy left by Mr. Tom Mosin. Mr. Mosin's term expired at the end of December 2019. The at-large appointment is to fulfill the term of Mrs. Valda Jones, who resigned her position effective January 2020, and will, there'll be a remainder of her term will then expire, again amended in January 2023. And all these appointments, of course, are made by the Board of Commissioners. So these, these two vacancies are before you for consideration at this time. We have two applications.
Make a motion for Mr. McCusker to fill the architect and Ms. Tool to complete Mrs. Jones' term of two more years.
Mrs. Tool is both a history professor and as a program coordinator for the Heritage Alliance of Northeast Tennessee, so to be good applicants.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second to, any other questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes.
That brings us to the Golf Advisory Board. We have two appointments on the Golf Advisory Board. We have the terms of Mr. Mark Panuk and Mr. James Pickering that expire January 2020. Mr. James Pickering expressed an interest in being reappointed. I believe the term of Mr. Panuk typically is the tradition of the commission to try to limit to a two-term, a consecutive term. So we've advertised this vacancy, and we have received the applications from the following folks. Mr. Joel Dahlhauser, a 12-year city resident, Mr. James Pickering, a board member, a current board member, who's been on the board for three years. And again, these are for three-year terms, and this is governed by the bylaws of the Golf Advisory Board approved by the City Commission.
I can attest to the fact that both of them are very good golfers, and this is a very active board, has been doing some great work over at Pine Oaks, particularly after we closed Buffalo Valley and we're making investments over at Pine Oaks. So is there a motion to accept Mr. Dahlhauser and Mr. Pickering?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes.
That brings us to the Senior Services Advisory Council for three appointments that are before you. And the terms of Bruce Shields, Paul Burks, and Joe Willem's expired at the end of December. Mr. Shields has expressed interest in being reappointed to council. Mr. Burks and Mr. and Ms. Willem's are not eligible for reappointment. We have advertised for volunteers to fill five vacancies and have received the applications from the following. Again, Bruce Shields, who is a current member requesting reappointment. Again, Bruce Shields, who is a current member requesting reappointment. Kendra Majeski, who is active in the Senior Center and other Parks and Recreation activities. And Jean Micky Johnson, who has served as facilitator for the Senior Center of Reaccreditation Process and has a passion to serve the senior population. She's a clinical instructor at the Department of Community and Behavioral Health at ETSU. And these are before you for consideration. Just to give you a reminder, the bylaws call for no less than five, but no more than 14 appointed members, plus the city manager or designee, which happens to be me, on this board. So, there's obviously room for future citizens to be a part of this if there's a desire.
So, there are three appointments available, and three have applied.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion to accept these by unanimous consent?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
This brings us to the eight appointments to the Senior Services Foundation Board, and these are five original appointments and three requests for reappointments to the Senior Service Foundation Board. Again, these bylaws adopted by the commission provide the board shall consist of no less than 12, no more than 25 members. And the foundation board currently has 15 members, so certainly, again, there is room for a larger board if there's citizen interest to have that complement of members. We have advertised, and we have received five new applications from eligible citizens, and of course, three for reappointment. And you can see the names of James R. Hunter, Charles Howell, Deborah Marshall Pollan, Lydia Allen, Star Barto, Fred Lewis, Lisa Williams, and Sherry Russo. And again, this is ready for your consideration.
We have eight appointments and eight applicants. Commissioners?
Move to approve the eight applicants.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
And we have an item under street closures, and this is a...
Before we move on, it's probably worth acknowledging in those appointments, the majority of these appointments are to vacancies created by those who have served stepping away. And without naming them all individually, a word of thanks to all of those who have spent the past number of years serving in these various roles.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'd also like to add, too, that we really want to encourage the applicants to call us, too. It's really helpful if we can talk with you and learn of your interest, and if you're interested in other committees, that if we can't get you on this one this time, we probably have other openings, and we'd love to see you get on other committees as well. Thank you. Go ahead.
Next item is a request for a street closure on February 29, 2020. This is a street closure request from the First United Methodist Church to...
Come to A.D.
...owe the places you'll go, 5K. Hold on. Hold on. Saturday, February 29, 2020. The applicant is requesting a portion of various streets to close from 9:30 a.m. until noon, as shown on the attached map for the purpose of a road race. The event will begin at 10:30 and end by noon. The applicant does not intend to utilize tents or other temporary structures, and beer is not allowed within the area nor recommended by this group. We have reviewed the application. We recommend approval, and traffic control measures will be approved and provided by staff. So, we'll be working with this group.
Is the applicant present? You want to come on up? If you just state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Colin Glennon, and my address is at 2210 Camelot Circle here in Johnson City.
I'm real curious in a minute how you came up with that name, but let's turn it over to the commissioners.
I move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions of our applicant, staff? All right. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes. You want to tell a little bit about the event and how you got that name?
Well, it's been the reindeer run previously.
Right.
It used to be in December, of course, but decided to try something new. It serves as a fundraiser for the preschool there, the Early Learning Center, where I sit on the board. That's why I'm here. But it's also really an event to kind of get the kids excited. Before the actual 5K, there's a 50-yard dash for the kids down Spring Street, and they think that's really cool. Or my son always thinks it's really cool, and they like doing that. So, it's just kind of a fun event for the church community, for the school, and then it is for families, but also for serious runners as well. I run in the, I am not a serious runner, but they go very fast, and then I come minutes and minutes after them. But it's a great event, and we really appreciate the city's support.
Okay. How do people register or sign up?
You can sign up on the website or just drop in by the church or check out the Early Learning Center website.
Very good. Well, owe the places you may go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that brings us to the movement to bring ordinance number 4722-19, which is under third reading, from its proper place on the agenda, move it to, prior to the consent agenda, to expedite the departure of our good minister here. So, this is ordinance number 4722-19, and ordinance in the conveyance of city property located on Main Street to the First Presbyterian Church is before you for consideration.
We have staff that will be just reminding the public what we are voting on tonight. We moved it up, so they may not be prepared yet. I apologize, Mr. Mitchell.
No, that's all right, Mayor. This piece right here is the conversion piece. It is not the alley closure piece. And so, I would need for Mr. Peterson or Public Works to speak on specifics of the swap. The alley closure is scheduled for second reading tonight.
This is a swap of property with, that involves the parking lot right across the Founder's Park on Commerce Street, next to Wild Wings, if you will, in exchange for this property. Also on the agenda is, in order to make this property for the church whole, there's an abandonment of an alleyway so that they can enclose it. They're having difficulty with some homeless populations, that sort of thing, and we're having parking issues that we want to resolve. So, it's a great swap, and we recommend approval.
Let's take care of the parking lot first, and then I think Mr. Peterson will go ahead and do on second reading, the abandonment of the alleyway. We want to get Pastor to church here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, commissioners?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes. Okay. So, the alley closure.
The important thing to note, as it relates to the alley closure, is that this is a request for approximately 210 feet of the existing alley extending from the, really from the church wall, all the way back to the back corner of Mid-City Grill's property. So, it does not close the entire alley. So, it leaves open the portion of the alley adjacent to Mid-City Grill, allowing for ingress and egress into the parking lot here, but would close it to that back corner. In addition, there would be a utility and access easement that would be permanently retained on the alley because of subsurface utilities.
Mayor, let me interrupt and say, this would be ordinance 4726, number 19, and it would be a public hearing.
Right. Okay. I will open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak for or against the closure of the alleyway as presented by staff. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Peterson? We're good? And there will be one more reading on this one, on third reading then. All right. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes. Thank you, Pastor.
Your next order of business is consideration of the consent agenda.
Commissioners, are there any items you would like pulled on the consent agenda? Mr. Calhoun?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Fowler?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am.
And I don't have any either. Okay. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
All right. This will take you to ordinance number 4727-20, which will be your, an amendment to your FY '20 fiscal year budget. Caption reads, "An ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget passed by ordinance 4692-19 is ready for your consideration on first reading and public hearing." Since this is a budget ordinance, it must have public hearing and first reading.
Are you going to review the budget amendment?
Dustin.
There we go.
Dustin, there we go.
Good evening. The budget amendment, this is your mid-year budget amendment for FY '20 budget. The proposed impact on the general fund, fund balance is $741,154. Included in that, in the general fund, are information technology items, some of which are related to the ransomware attack. There is a part of a grant match for the Langston Grant that was approved right before Christmas. The position upgrades related to the Development Services Department restructure is included in that. Excuse me. And additional funds for purchase of, for additional vehicles for the police department. Outside of the general fund, the PEP fund and the Capital Projects Fund for schools, the work being done at the three elementary schools is in this budget amendment. Other miscellaneous technology items are in various other funds, water sewer, stormwater, solid waste, Freedom Hall, Police Technology Fund. And then, a new position in stormwater is included in this budget amendment.
Commissioners, you have questions of Dustin?
Early expansion idea?
We did. Review of it?
Thank you. It does require a public hearing, as Mr. Peterson said.
I will open the public hearing. Is anyone to speak for or against our budget amendment for 2020? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there any other questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Your next order of business is consideration of ordinance number 4724-19. An ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix to ordinance number 1519, entitled, an ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith. By changing from I-2 Heavy Industrial District to R-4 Medium Density Residential District, certain property located at 204 Highland Avenue is ready for your consideration on second reading and public hearing.
Pass on.
Mayor, commissioners, this is a request by Habitat for Humanity to construct a 1,660 square feet building at 204 Highland Avenue. The area is generally residential in character. This is a very small lot. The future land use map designates this piece of property for residential development as such, the proposed use will be in line with the future land use map. The property is currently vacant. As you see, the property owner had a required neighborhood meeting. There were no members of the public at that neighborhood meeting. We have received a few calls on this property, really just asking what is going on. There's been no opposition to it. The concept plan, the concept plan is required for this rezoning submitted by the applicant and meets all requirements. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning from I-2 to R-4.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Very good. This is also a public hearing. I will open the public hearing for those who would like to speak for or against this project. I see Habitat back there. Would you like to come up and say something? If you would just state your name and address, please.
I'm Trish Patterson. I actually reside in Honey Flats, but our office is in Colonial Heights. We represent and serve Washington County, Sullivan County, and Carter Counties. Thank you, Mayor Brock, for the opportunity to speak for it. We have obtained this piece of property and wanted to offer it for one of our home-buying residents. We don't have a family that has selected this lot just yet, but we have two opportunities to build in Johnson City in 2020. And we'll, once it's rezoned for residential, we will provide that as an option for our families when they go to make a choice about where they will build their homes.
How many homes did y'all build last year?
Last year, well, we have six that we can, that we finished. We'll actually be finishing two in Johnson City on St. Clair this spring. One is for our veteran build, and then another is for a single home buyer there as well. So, we'll finish construction on those two Johnson City homes. And we just finished one. We're ready to close it in Kingsport. And then, we have one that we'll close this spring in Bristol as well.
Well, we appreciate all the work Habitat does for the community and provide affordable housing for our citizens. Thank you so much.
We are grateful for the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this project? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Brock?
Yes.
Next ordinance is ordinance forty-seven twenty-five dash nineteen. An ordinance to amend the zoning map of the, let's see, we just did two oh.
Four.
Four. Okay, we're doing two oh two. An ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, being part of the appendix ordinance number fifteen nineteen, entitled in ordinance to adopt a code of laws and ordinances for the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, and to repeal all laws and ordinances in conflict therewith and aminitory thereof, by changing from I two heavy industrial district to MX one mixed-use neighborhood district, certain property located at two oh two Highland Avenue, ready for your consideration on second reading and public hearing.
Hassan?
Mayor Commissioners, this is a staff initiated rezoning of a city-owned piece of property. To reason this piece of property from I two heavy industrial to MX one mixed-use neighborhood district. This area has generally lost its industrial character. It's essentially either residential or you've got founder's park right beside this piece of property. So the heavy industrial use in this area will be inappropriate. Staff is recommending that the zone be changed from I two to MX one instead of the R four that is just voted for the other piece of property because the MX one provides greater flexibility in the use of this property. However, any non-residential use that can go on this piece of property will be very, very restrictive. It cannot exceed two thousand square foot, building, the building gross floor area cannot exceed two thousand square feet. And if the city were to convey this property, you will maintain the rights to put any restrictions that can be applicable to the property. The planning commission recommends approval.
Good. Any other questions of staff? I will open the public hearing on this rezoning from industrial two to MX one. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Ms. Jennings?
Commissioner Calhoun. Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Brock.
Yes, this time. Changed my mind from last time. Okay.
Hey, and we have. We have done the alleyway abandonment.
We have.
And we have done the conveyance to the property swap.
We have.
With First Presbyterian Church, which takes us to ordinance number forty-seven twenty-three dash nineteen. An ordinance to designate the boundaries of a regional retail and tourism development district in the city of Johnson City pursuant to the authority granted by, to the city by House Bill fifty-two, Senate Bill fourteen thirty-four, as enacted in 2019 by the one-hundred and seventh General Assembly, ready for your consideration on third reading. There have been, the map associated with the boundary as it is being posed is before you. If you will recall, we had a request at our last meeting about three, about property that joined the original, or the boundaries outlined by the red line there. That property has been included. The Department of Revenue has reviewed this and given us a verbal okay that that was, that is permissible and would be, if included, would, would be approved by them as far as meeting criteria of the bill that was passed. Rather than boring everybody with information we've covered a couple of times, I thought I would focus on trying to answer some questions that have arisen during the course of the last couple of weeks since we last considered this. I guess as, as a point of clarification, we'll start out with, we, we did not have any knowledge of this bill introduced into the legislature. When the bill was introduced, it was introduced as a caption bill and got through the first two readings before the real body of the final bill was introduced. And we actually gained knowledge of the passage of the bill authorizing the establishment of these districts on the day it passed, was passed on third reading in the state legislature. So this was a surprise to us. We were very thankful for this opportunity to have another tool in the toolbox to promote economic development within our community. Someone had asked the question, why did we wait till the holidays to run this? We processed this as information became available, and we had a development group that came forward with a proposal. This bill was passed in May, and for, to this point, some nine months later, we've had one group that has come forward and expressed interest with a solid plan that has real estate in their control and has come forward with some preliminary site plan and financial data as to what they're proposing. So we processed it. All of the readings were done at a regularly scheduled meeting that was properly noticed in, in an open meeting, so it was done in accordance as we would process any other request. Another question has been raised, is the city going to recommend annexation of the county portion of this property? No, the only way we can and will annex property is by owner request. That's state law, and that's what we plan on doing. So there, there's no pressure for any land use change, zoning change, annexation. This is merely a, an opportunity for people to utilize if they so choose to do so. And if they're raising hay and cattle right now and want to do that, then that's perfectly fine. Nobody's got a problem with that.
Mr. Peterson, for them to be eligible for the incentive, it would have to be in the city, though?
Yes, ma'am.
So they would have to request.
The way the bill is written, in order to be eligible for the incentive, the property has to be inside the city.
Request annexation for that forty percent or so that's out there.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Now, you mentioned a plan that's been presented. Does anything about adopting this action entitle or obligate the use of this incentive for that plan?
No.
Okay. So will, at that point, move away from a big view to a specific request the next time we talk about this in the event this passed?
That, that is correct. What this does is establish the boundaries of the district. If you have one development come forward, or you have multiple developments come forward, each development will have a unique approval process and a unique agreement between the city. That your industrial development board is going to be involved in this, so there will be a, an agreement between the city and the IDB, and then with each developer that may come forward with a proposed development within this district. The incentive is limited to the incremental sales tax gain only, and that is on five, five of the seven percent state sales tax that, that is levied. There is no local money involved in this incentive package, much unlike the TIF district and, and other incentives that we fund in other parts of town, and that is nothing but local money.
Let me ask a question a little bit different way on the sales tax, the incremental sales tax. So in this district right now, sales tax is being generated, so that will be considered the baseline.
That is correct.
As we go in here.
Yes, ma'am.
So in order to be eligible for the incentive, they would have to generate incremental over and above the baseline that would meet the requirements of the legislation?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the higher the baseline is, tougher it's going to be to eke out that incremental sales tax unless you've got a lot of vacant property?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. In order to maximize the available incentive, you pretty much, in order to maximize the available incentive, you're going to have to work with raw land. I mean, you, even if you own the property and it's built upon, if it's generating sales tax, you're only going to get the increment, and if it involves any sort of demolition, reconstruction, whatever, I mean, that's, that's just additional cost that you're going to incur as, as far as the development process. So the other two districts in Upper East Tennessee, well, in fact, there's three existing districts, I think, in the state, Bristol and Kingsport and East Ridge. And I know for sure that Bristol and Kingsport were done on raw land, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that the one at East Ridge was done on raw land, but I'd need to double check that. Couple of other questions that have come up. We talked earlier about how would the incentives be, be designated, and the, the process would be if, when this is, if and when this is approved by the state of Tennessee and the districts established, we would enter into, develop an agreement with the industrial development board to oversee and, and run it, just like they do other incentive programs. And in order to do that, you all will, will approve a set of criteria that will have to be met in order for the, for a developer to be eligible for the incentive money. The incentive money comes to the city of Johnson City, and the incentive money that comes to us is the same money that would go to developers to encourage and incentivize their development. It also allows for us, should there be improvement, improvements necessitated by the development within this district, it allows us to use some of that state incentive money to do required improvements within the district. So if there is a need for road improvements, there's already plenty of water and sewer and, and all those things. We already pick up trash out there. All the city services are available, so there, there's not going to be any extra expense associated, perhaps some, some public works types expenses, but we can cover that with the incentive money that, that is generated within the district.
At what point in time would the developer have access to this incentive money? When in the project?
The, the way that the bill is set up, the state makes one annual payment within so many days after the close of their fiscal year, and, and I don't recall off the top of my head half what that number of days is. I want to say ninety. But that allows the state of Tennessee enough time to evaluate what the incremental gain is, and they will reconcile their sales tax histories for the properties within the district. And then they would make payment to us, and then in the agreements that we would have with developers, we would determine at what point in time the incentive money would be paid to the developers on an annual basis.
So it's an annual?
It's an, it's, it's, the books are saddled up on an annual basis at the close of the state's fiscal year. Yes, ma'am. Another question was, what happened to the priority of downtown development? Nothing. It's been a high priority. It continues to be a high priority, and the development of a district like this will generate enough money to allow us to continue to make significant development into downtown and, and potentially West Walnut Street. The money that we realize out of this can be used at your, at your choice, however you want to use it. If the development occurs and just meets the minimum requirements of the law, that means that this development would have to generate thirty million dollars a year in sales taxes, or in gross sales, I'm sorry, in gross sales. On thirty million dollars a year in gross sales, Washington County would realize one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year for school funding just for Washington County. The city would gain one hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in sales tax, limited solely to funding education in Johnson City. The city would also realize another three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in sales taxes that would go to your general fund to be used at your discretion for improvements in other areas of the city or parks, whatever, whatever you would like to do. Based on a fifty million dollar project, the sales tax, or the property taxes would generate four hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually for Washington County, and the city would realize three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars annually in property tax. So if you take the three forty-two and the three seventy-five, we're in the neighborhood of three quarters of a million dollars of new money for our general fund that could be utilized for reinvestment in Walnut Street, downtown, North Run Street, which is, is really the, the core of our sales tax and retail economic activity in our community today, not to mention the money that automatically goes straight to schools for additional operations and maintenance costs in the school system. So it, it is not only of benefit to the district itself and the incentive made available by the state, but as, as a district like this builds out, it's going to generate the money that we need to avoid future property taxes and to make continued reinvestment in other areas of the city so that we can continue to grow the things that we have committed to, such as downtown and outdoor recreation and, and job creation. So there, there's a lot of benefit to the development of a district like this, and it's not, all of the benefit is not localized to one geographic location by any means. There has been discussion, question about the, the interstate interchange that was selected and why this came forward. This is exit seventeen. It is the, the, I tell you, just start with that, that overall big slide. The interchange has got to be within twenty miles of two state lines to be eligible from just a distance criteria. So those are the, the five interchanges in Johnson City that meet that criteria. As you can see, University Parkway meets it by a quarter mile, and the Boones Creek exit makes it by one and three-quarter miles, just barely within, within the zone. If you'd go on, please, Preston. So we know what's at Boones Creek. It's basically vacant land with, with a few exceptions.
Nine hundred and forty-seven acres, is that what the amended acreage was?
Yes, ma'am. State of Franklin interchange. What I asked staff to do was to look at the big tracks, whether occupied or unoccupied, and try to determine what kind of mass of area could be assembled into a district. And the values that you see there are the tax appraisal values, so that's not market value by any means. That's what they're on the books for. You'll notice that Sam's and Walmart are on there, and the values that are there have been challenged and appealed on multiple occasions. That seems to be the national trend with, with long-term, some of the big box retailers is to try to get their property values lowered on the tax rolls. So if, if you wanted to try to put this together, the parcels identified are the former Kmart, Sam's, Walmart, and the vacant farm behind Sam's Club. That's a total of a hundred and six and a half acres. The valuation there is fourteen point seven, is that the right number, Preston? No. You, you figured average values for me. So the, the median valuation of those properties is fourteen point seven million dollars per property. As you can see, that would be an extraordinarily expensive interchange to redevelop. You're going to have to take out probably three of the more extensive retail generators within the city and then redevelop them into something else. The incremental.
It generates more sales tax than the Walmart presently does and the Sam's presently does.
Exactly where I was going to go. I don't think, I'm not sure that there's a retailer out there today that's going to generate more sales tax than Walmart and Sam's. I mean, pretty much across the country, they, they generate a lot of retail activity. Okay? If you go to the next one, please. The next one we looked at was Run Street. As you can see, there are hundreds of houses there, so to assemble a large tract in that area would require hundreds of individual real estate transactions, and you're only going to be able to assemble a large tract there if you have willing sellers. Nobody, a developer does not have the power of eminent domain or condemnation, so it's not like you can go in and condemn property and buy it under the threat of condemnation. So you're, you're pretty much going to have to work with the big tracks. You see the ones that are listed there. The acreage shown there is fifty acres, so there again, you're, you're dealing with a pretty small area in comparison to what the area is at exit seventeen that's available to work with. Next one is downtown. You probably have more individual property owners to work with down there than you do anywhere else in terms of trying to assemble large tracts of land. What's identified here is about twenty-six acres. That involves some property that we own, property where First Choice is, and a couple of other pieces there. As you can see, the big green area to the top right of the page is Tannery Knob. I mean, that's, that's developed into the bike park now. There's residential properties there. That's, that's, in our estimation, that would be very cost prohibitive due to grading cost involved with getting a little.
And this is Wataka and Unika on the top of the slide.
Yes.
And Market on the bottom of the slide.
Yes, sir. So as you can see, those, both of those interchanges would be exceedingly difficult to assemble a, a large enough tract to where you could do some sort of amusement, recreation, retail development there. And then the last one is University Parkway. The acreage identified there is ninety-one acres. Some of it is developed property, some of it is not developed property. And if somebody's going to throw out the question or the comment, well, what about the golf course? The golf course is a hundred acres. You've got to have a willing seller before you can acquire that property, and based on previous direction from this board, it, it's not for sale. We, we have one golf course, and it is heavily used and is, you know, a kind of an inch behind our outdoor recreation and, and tourism piece, and therefore the, the amount of property that would be feasible to develop at University Parkway is also somewhat limited. Therefore, of the exits throughout Johnson City, exit seventeen is the one that makes the most sense. It's the most economically feasible. It is the only interstate interchange that anyone has expressed any interest in developing over the last nine months that this has been an available tool in our toolbox. So based on that, our recommendation would be to approve the district as presented to you this evening, and. you this evening, and if approved, we'll get the complete package together that needs to be submitted to the State of Tennessee for their review and approval. And the final approval of the establishment of the district is solely in the hands of the State of Tennessee.
On exit 17, I know, you know, we all know a lot of the property is, is built out as well. Is there a percentage of what you identified there that's actually vacant land?
I couldn't tell you what the percentage is off the top of my head. It's, it's well less than 40%, I would think. What's developed is basically along Boones Creek Road. Of course, the cemetery's not in, the new apartment complex is not in. The power boards developed, the, those shops along the front of Boones Creek Road on both sides of the interstate is developed, but those large tracts are, for the most part, all developed and raw land.
Just a point of clarification. When you're reading ordinance number 4723-19, down at the bottom it says House Bill 052, but it's really House Bill 524. We have a slash in there instead of a four.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
To your question, and you, you touched on this, but can you go over again the, the process that will be in place for annexation of any areas that are currently in the county within that, within that boundary? And also the approval process for a zoning or approval of whatever goes on to any of those tracks?
Yes.
As far as safeguards about what can and cannot go there?
Annexation and assignment of zoning will happen in that area the same way it does all across the city of Johnson City. An annexation request will have to originate with the property owner. We will take it under consideration and evaluate, is it, is it proper? Is it legal? Does it make sense for us to annex it? And if so, we'll make the recommendation to the Planning Commission for their approval, and it'll run through three readings and a public hearing at this level, as well as an approval and a, or a reading and a public hearing at the Planning Commission level. In terms of zoning changes or the application of zoning to a newly annexed piece of property, it will follow the same process as we do all zoning matters within the city regardless of location. The application will be made and the recommend, or the recommendation will be made to Planning Commission. Planning Commission will consider it an open meeting, and they typically have a public hearing on those. It is then forwarded to you for your consideration as all ordinances, and the second reading will consist of a public hearing and second reading. It'll take three readings, the ordinance, to pass and apply the zoning.
So the safeguards are in place, just like any other piece of property?
Just like they are in Stone Ridge, Hunter's Lake, Tree Streets, North Run Street. Pick, pick your location, yes sir.
Thank you.
The property that's currently in the city, is most of that already zoned before?
It's a mix. The valid piece is still zoned RTP. Did Planning Commission consider that this week, a rezoning on the valid piece?
They're, they're got requests before, right?
Okay. But I've, I've been told that they would like to have their zoning changed, yes. You've got residential use in there, you've got business use, you've got RTP. There's, there's a variety of different zoning applications within the district, and you've got, so you've probably got some agricultural zoning on those properties that are out in the county.
Well, it's all in the county.
Or beyond the corporate limits, thank you, sir.
Some of it's in the unincorporated area.
Yes, sir.
You know.
In, in terms of residential growth, this area still is one of the, between Boones Creek and Gray is still growing considerably more than just about any place in the county.
Yes, ma'am. I've worked here for 29, working on 30 years now, and Boones Creek has been identified as the next high-growth area of Johnson City and Washington County. And as far back as the early and mid 90s, we began significant infrastructure improvements out there with roads and sewers and water and, and all the city services. So it has long been planned that exit 17 would develop both with a lot of residential as well as commercial and recreational and tourism type development out there. So this isn't unexpected. It, it's been on the books, it's been in conversation and plans for, for decades, literally. You know, the, as we recruit new business and industry to the area, you know, we, we get comments after site visits, and a lot of times they, they're repetitive even though it is different unaffiliated individuals or companies we're talking about, and it's usually, gosh, everybody here is so nice, y'all've got a great school system, I can't believe you've got that nice of a library, and, you know, everybody seems to be, you know, focused and a good workforce. But there's not a lot of shopping and cultural entertainment type opportunities here. You know, our spouses are moving here from St. Louis or some other location, and, you know, we've recognized for, for some time that one of our challenges in growing the local economy is the, the availability of some shopping and recreation and, and those types of things. So, you know, this is an opportunity based on the plan that has been submitted to this point that will contain recreation and tourism things. It's got a potential for some residential piece to it along with the retail, you know, potentially hotels, I'm sure there will be eating establishments that will develop along through there. So this is, this isn't a copy of something that's already been done, I don't think. This is something that will offer a lot of opportunities and different experiences for different people. And the nice thing about it is if it's successful, and I'm sure with the amount of money being required to be invested by private sector, they're going to make pretty sure it's going to be successful before they start doing something. That incentive doesn't say that they're not going to have any skin in the game. They're going to have millions of dollars of skin in this game, and the group that's doing it, recreation is their business.
Well, one group that's talking about it.
The one group that's talking about it, yeah.
That's the cart ahead of the horse. We're just setting the boundaries.
Right. So, you know, I think it's a good opportunity that you've got interest from a group that recreation is their business. I'm unaware that they've done any really, really large developments that were just straight retail. So, you know, we're, if we establish this boundary and the development group that has come forward with a proposal at this time stays in the game, then we've got the opportunity through these subsequent agreements to work towards getting a development that we would like to see, and it will work financially for them, and add a lot of quality of life and, and different aspects of improvement to our, our community. So regardless of what gets built out there and who builds it, if they do it in the next 20 years, they're entitled to the incentive money, which, which really makes-
Well, they're not entitled.
Well, if they meet the criteria and we agree to send them, and we approve.
And we approve, right.
Yes, sir. Poor choice of words on my part, thank you.
Right. Nobody's entitled to anything after this vote if it passes.
Correct. There, there's several more layers of approvals to go through before it is final deal.
Mr. Peterson, one of, one of the things, and of course, we've all received calls and spoken with people in the community, is the concern that if we put a development out there, that it may take away from other areas of, of Johnson City. One of the things that I think makes Johnson City such a strong place is that we have diverse economic generating centers around town. So, of course, we have downtown that we've been putting a lot of capital and, and heart into to bring back, and it's, it's working. We're going to continue to that. You know, in our capital improvement plan, we see where our next investments are going to be, and working hand in hand with the private sector. When we do the, when we do the infrastructure, the private sector then steps in and, and does development, and it's worked out beautifully downtown. We'll continue that. Our next is what we're putting into the West Walnut Street and what we see as tremendous potential for, for the city. But it's, it's a little different from downtown, and as we look at the redevelopment there, of which in 2020, we will begin work, 21, a lot of work, and so we have probably somewhere in the $10 million range of infrastructure work over on West Walnut Street.
We have invested somewhere between probably 13 and 15 million dollars in downtown to this point, and the West Walnut Street project is going to be about an equal amount of money. So in a period of 15 to 18 years, you're looking at nearly a $50 million investment into downtown West Walnut Street area.
And we've just, we've just been down to Nashville and asked the state if they would consider helping us with the restoration of the Ash Street Courthouse. We don't know if we'll get the money or not, but there's a real commitment on our part to do that, because West Walnut Street can just be a wonderful area for young people, an entrepreneurial ecosystem built over there that's going to be, be great. Could you comment a little bit? So some of our other economic zones would be North Run Street. We're all, obviously, would not want to see them all, you know, damaged from other development. We're getting ready to make some investments out that way. Would you talk about that just a little bit, what we're going to do on North Run Street, and then some of the development that's occurring around the mall?
Well, you've got over 200 residential units that are, that are going in, in the back door of the mall. There's discussion about, you know, another hotel property out there as a public works project. Phil and his team are currently in the process of doing some design work on dealing with streetscapes that would involve North Run Street sidewalks, you know, light poles, signage, improved traffic circulation, some of those things. You know, if, I guess from a, a financial perspective as far as our budget's concerned, downtown is the old downtown that everybody refers to, to downtown. But when I think of downtown and where the money really changes hands, it's really Mount Castle and Run. I mean, when you get out into that area of North Johnson City, that's where the, the majority of our large volume retail and economic activity takes place. And, you know, you've heard me say before, we've got to get downtown up and running, we've got to continue to, to reinvest our money down there to, to make a thriving area of town and to create something different from North Johnson City. But we can't forget North Johnson City. I mean, it generates a very significant portion of our revenue on an annual basis, and we're going to, we need to make reinvestments into that area of town, just like we do Walnut Street and State of Franklin and out around by the Boys Club with the Lark Street Project and everything else. You know, I guess maybe as a point of reference, if a project were to meet the criteria and get built out there, and it met those minimum threshold numbers I mentioned a minute ago, and we had an additional $750,000 a year coming into our revenue stream, it's possible, if the commission so chose to do so, that pretty much pays the debt service on Walnut Street. I mean, that, that's how significant that an additional shot in our revenue arm would be. So it, it opens a lot of doors for a lot of opportunity throughout the community if, if a district like this is approved and, and somebody comes in and is successful, and, you know, like I said last time, we're allowed to identify up to 950 acres. I have no expectation whatsoever that 950 acres will ever develop like this. For a point of reference, I believe the pinnacle's only a couple of hundred acres to, somewhere between 200 and 300 acres, and that seems to be everybody's benchmark as to what something like that could look like. I, I'm not sure that you could duplicate the pinnacle in today's market. I mean, that's, that's been a decade ago that that thing really got, came up out of the ground, and the retail market's changed. I was in a conversation today with some folks in Nashville that people are starting to ask questions about can Amazon deliver packages with robots and drones in the state of Tennessee? I mean, the world's changed, folks. You, you, you can't just build a bunch of big boxes that are selling retail and expect people to show up. It's going to have to be an experience that offers a lot of different opportunities, I think, and, you know, that's my opinion, and there's folks that spend millions of dollars a year that, that's their business developing things, but you look at the mall and the lifestyle centers that are successful, I, I think you're, well, I don't think, I know that you're going to hear some big exciting news out of the mall in, in a fairly short amount of time, and I think part of that is a, a new offering of opportunities to spend your time at the mall in Johnson City, much like a lot of other malls are doing now, so it's, it's an opportunity, it's a tool in the toolbox if we choose to take it and it gets approved, and we'll maximize the, the potential out of it to the best of our ability and share the wealth of the, of the projects across the city.
Well, I think, again, one of our strengths is the diversity of the way we're laid out as a city. What our investments on our Lark Street is opening up probably for, for development. Just across the street from that, 60 other acres that may develop soon in, in combination with East Tennessee State University. Those are all exciting things, and I think the thing that, at least my goal, I've been on the commission since 2013, is, is to look at how we can truly become an epicenter for economic activity in the region and be a strong city that gives back to the region. And so the diversity of our demographics, people want different things. And I think we have the opportunity here to provide for the people out in the Boones Creek area and Gray area, shopping that they would like to have to support them, you know, in their neighborhoods as well. So I've done most of the talking, I'll stop now. Any other comments? Anything else, Mr. Peterson?
I'd be glad to answer any questions the commission may have.
All right, this is third reading, and commissioners, is there a motion to proceed?
A move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second motion.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Just, just a couple of comments. I think it's, and we, we've all heard from a lot of people over the last couple of weeks, and pretty passionate on both sides of this issue. And I think if our goal is to make everybody happy with this vote, we're going to fail miserably. However, we've been talking about this particular area in this city. I've only been here for a year on this commission, but for a long time about how can we get things going at that exit? And it's sitting there, and we've been wanting, wanting something to happen. And I've heard too many presentations over the last six months about our lack of population growth. And I've also heard too many presentations over the last year about things that we want to happen in Johnson City, all over Johnson City. And, and I think this is just an opportunity we cannot afford to turn our back on. And I've supported it the first two times, and I'll support this again.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Ms. Jennings.
Commissioner Calhoun.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wise.
Yes.
And Mayor Brock.
Yes. Mr. Peterson.
Your next order of business is to consider a formal request from the Chamber of Commerce for the city to consider purchasing their property located at 603 East Market Street in the amount of $500,000. Mr. Cantler is here to make a presentation and pursue the request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, the chamber's mission is, is a lot of what we've been talking about tonight. Our purpose is to, to create sense of place and grow population. And, and one of the, the strategies we're putting in place is relocating our operations from- from 603 East Market Street to the model mill. We've been working with a developer on that and have a, a very reasonable opportunity for us to relocate that puts us in a position that we can better attract, better use and leverage that, that facility to, to recruit and, and, and put together our campaigns to attract more people into the region. In this process, we'll be moving and, and cohabitating with net rep during this process, which is, which is intriguing because we're, we're having the regional conversation. But as Mr. Peterson and, and Mayor Brock and I've had conversations, we still need boots in the ground in Johnson City to make sure we're, we're positioning ourselves, we're doing the things we need to do to attract new population and, and make it meanable in the ecosystem for entrepreneurs, our startups, and for our, our business recruitment. So, with that, the, the chamber is asking for the city to, to evaluate and purchase our, our current property at 603 East Market Street due to the strategic location of the facility to the municipal and safety building, also the fact that the end of, at the bottom of Chamber Drive, it's, it's the trailhead for the tannery knobs. We, we offer suggestions on opportunities with the building. Could it become additional office space for the city? Could it become an outpost for outdoor recreation? Could it become a visitor center or something of that nature? And, and we would, would like to work with the city in any way we could possible to facilitate that, that arrangement. So, tonight, my presence is just to, to formally ask and begin the process to, to, for the city to consider to purchase the, the, the current chamber building at our, our total appraised value of $500,000.
What is the acreage that sits on, Mr. Cantler?
It's just under an acre.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you say appraised value, you mean on the tax part?
That says the tax part, the, the total market appraisal.
Mr. Peterson, how are we approaching this? We're having the building evaluated or?
Yes, ma'am. We are in the process now of having a real estate appraisal done on the, on the property. And we will be doing a complete evaluation of all the mechanical systems, roof, we'll do an environmental analysis, I mean, all the due diligence that you would go through at any time you're considering purchasing a piece of property. In addition to that, we've begun staff discussions about if, if we end up purchasing the property, what would we do with it? What's the highest and best use of it? You know, initially, from my perspective, there are a lot higher and better uses for it than a trailhead. We, we've got some space needs for staff. So, we're, we're looking at it from not only the, the standpoint of do you do something recreational with it, for lack of a better word, but also could you use it as an annex building to accommodate some space needs that we have for staff? So, we expect all of that to be concluded probably in the next six or seven weeks. And when we get all the evaluations and reports back, we'll put together a recommendation for you for your consideration and we'll come back to the commission with it.
Mr. Peterson, any questions, Mr. Cantler? That was easy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
And that takes you to the end of your agenda, down to the manager's report. Mayor, if I could ask that you go ahead and do public input and once we get public input done, we have the need to go into executive session to discuss the settlement or potential settlement with Washington County over school funding. So, I would say that we should do public input first and then go into executive session.
We did not have any applications for public input.
Okay.
So...
Very good. Counselor, if you could move us to executive session, please, Mayor.
All right, so I will adjourn the meeting and we will move to executive session.
You're going to recess the meeting until, while we go into executive session.
Thank you. I will recess the meeting, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Until we return after executive session. Thank you.[898.44]
I will reconvene our meeting. Mr. Peterson, would you like to provide a recap of our executive session?
Yes, ma'am. We are coming out of the executive session where we discussed the disagreement with Washington County over school funding and tried to better understand where we were with the negotiations to avoid an impasse where we could end up in potential litigation. We're still working diligently to avoid litigation, but, you know, that's still out there. So it was important that we understand where we are with the situation at this time and hopefully we can avoid litigation.
Thank you. We reached the end of the agenda before we recessed. Commissioners, are any -- and it is your monthly report, but I think we'll defer that unless there's some big thing you need to share.
I would like to call your attention in your information section is the construction project report, which gives you some pretty good details. We closed out and released the retainage on the Langston project, so it is 100 percent complete, and we've got a number of other projects that are nearing completion. And at your next meeting, we'll give you a good outline of the projects that we will get underway sometime here in the next couple of months for the spring construction season. Thank you.
Any comments from anybody?
Ma'am. Science Hill, please stop and spend it at home here in Johnson City tomorrow night, boys and girls basketball, and both boys teams are undefeated in conference going into tomorrow night, and Science Hill's boys are, I believe, 20 and 1 right now.
Yeah, they just lost that one game out in Hawaii, right?
Right. So it will probably be a packed house, but come chill in the toppers tomorrow.
Mr. Fowler, I want to congratulate you. He was awarded the Milligan Servant Leader Award today. That was a very impressive ceremony and well deserved, and we're very proud to be serving with you. Anything else? All right. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.